We're right, okay. You got a chair and got up there? No, you didn't. You got on Mr. Albert's shoulder.
All right, it's six o'clock, so if we could go ahead, I know people be coming and going here, and that's fine, but we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. In a moment, we're gonna have an invocation led by Steve Davis, the lead pastor of Trudy North Church, and we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. But before those two things, not on the agenda, in a moment, I'll ask us to stand and have a moment of silence for former mayor of Johnston, Terrence Colberth. If you didn't know Mayor Colberth, he passed away Sunday. No funeral arrangements have been announced, but he was mayor of Johnston for eight years, and he did not choose to run for reelection, and his, so he stepped down in April. So he was just the most recent mayor, if you will. So with that, I'd like to have a moment of silence, and then we'll follow that by the, with the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand. Thank you, Reverend Davis.
Let us pray. Father, what a true joy it is to come into your presence tonight and to thank you that even in the dark times, as Mayor Colberth's family is going through, that you walk with us. For your word tells us that you are there and walking with us through the valley of the shadow of death, that your rod and your staff will comfort us. And so, tonight, we ask your comfort and your presence to be very near to this family in their grief and in their loss. And tonight, we come to you, coming to an end of the year, thanking you, Father, for the leadership of, that you've given this council in this last year. Lord, we thank you for, Father, the wisdom and the strength and the courage that you give them to look for the common good for all men. And I pray that you would continue to bless them as they continue tonight. Lord, I ask that you would give them just a sense of your presence and direction and discernment with every decision that needs to be made. Lord, I pray that we would, as leaders, always reflect what you invite us to in your word, where you say that we are to love mercy, we are to love justice, and we are to walk humbly with our God. That would be our prayer for each of them tonight, as, as they lead, direct, and make decisions. And God, of course, as we come into the end of this year, we're reminded that this season is a season of always, of hope, because of the Christ child. And our prayer is for everyone gathered in this room tonight, that your light would overcome the darkness in our lives through the power of his light in us. And we ask that you would continue to guide this county in the coming year through the light of your love and your grace and your mercy, because of the power of your son, in the name of Jesus. And we pray it in his name. Amen.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right, council next on the agenda is the, is the approval of the agenda. I have no recommendations. Does anybody have anything we need to change on the agenda? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Dr. Kenyon makes a motion, and Vice Chairman Talbert made the second there. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the minutes from the November 1 regular meeting. Any comments or questions on the minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Councilwoman Ireland makes the motion, and Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Now, here's the part we've been waiting on, special recognition. So, appreciate everybody being here tonight. We have a handful of special recognitions to do, believe it or not, individually, so to speak. And so, the first one is, I'm gonna call on Nick Waits, our recreation director, if he'll come up, and he's gonna sort of walk us through the nine, ten youth football league champions. So I'll turn it over to him.
All right, yeah, our Petro County Youth Football League, nine and ten-year-old football team, they had a great season this past year and finished up a couple weeks ago, had a great group of kids, thirty-three, thirty-four kids, great coaches, great parents, and they won the league championship, and we're here to recognize them tonight for doing so.
You can do it there, but I want you down there when they do, when they ring.
First, I would like to say congratulations to my, to our nine and ten-year-old champion. But before I really acknowledge them, I would like for all parents to please stand. And I would like for you stay standing, because I would like to have, I would like to say something. I once stood in your shoes, so this is what I would like to say to you all. I know you give up your time, season after season, bringing your child to practice, games, and tournaments. It's not always easy, trust me, I understand. I know you constantly remind them over and over, do they have their sport bag, helmet, water bottles, that they keep forgetting to fill? And after every practice or game, somehow we remove grass stain from their uniform, and that takes magic. Your child may not say it, but they thank you. Having you on their sideline cheering their names makes all the difference in the world. I know, I was there. You have a front row seat to see them win, lose, get knocked down, and stand back up. You are there to see them grow and preserve. Some of you may get a little intense at times. I know, I'm a parent, I've done it. You can't help it, because you are all your child's biggest fan, and we are your biggest fan. With that being said, I want to take my hat off to all you parents. You may, you may be seated, and I'd like for my fellows to stand, nine and ten-year-olds. Nine and ten. Congratulations, 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 for being our Edgefield County nine and ten-year-old champions. You put forth a valid effort as a group, and you made us proud. What I mean by us, the Recreation Committee Department, which I serve on, the County Council, which I serve on, and Edgefield County as a whole. Mere words cannot express how proud we are of you guys. I heard this statement from one of the football coaches at Strong Thurman, as I was passing through the halls, telling his players, confidence with a determination matters to face the challenges, and you have done it. And congratulations again, because we are so proud to announce that we have nine and ten-year-olds from Edgefield County that are our champions. Thank you.
All right, this time, we're gonna call each of you up one by one. Trey Key? Boot to Quanza? Damon Walker? Peyton Harris? Charlie Caraway? Isaiah Washington? Cameron Hammond? Bentley Als? Memphis Nixon? Zach Carroll? Kayah Johnson? Carmella Herring? Jaden Brooks? Reese Trash? Jeremiah Farley? Justin Merrick? Michael Harland? Tashon Berg? Brayden Lubin? Marianne Meriwether? Cody Walker? Christopher Bright? Bradley Inlowe? Aiden Hamburg? Dylan Muldray? Deontez Davis? Jordan Johnson?
Jordan.
Kingston Mitchell? Aiden Lot? Nora Taylor? Amy Ann Washington?
Yeah, let me, let me take care of that. All right, so, let's do it like this. If you've got a ring, that's a coach or a player, if you've got a ring, we want you up here to get a picture with county council. And county council, I will tell you, there'll be a lot of them, let's just stand right here, so they can see us. So if you, if you're a player or a coach, please come up, and Nick, I'll ask you to help to get them organized a little bit. My head's like, make two lines or something.
Do we need to squeeze in a little bit?
Don't wanna, Scott, squeeze in a little bit?
Yes, yes, Ken, oh, yes. Where the little ones at? Can you see this little fella right here? He said, "If I live..."
Charlie, you little, you gotta make sure you can be seen, you can be seen. That's right.
We'll get it, son.
Okay, so that it? Thank you all. Now, I know that some of you will need to leave, so I'm just gonna tell you, if you need to leave, go ahead and leave, no problem. If you wanna stay, you can stay. You can stay for the whole meeting. You can stay for the whole meeting, but if, but it is a school night. This is a school night.
Bye, y'all. Thank y'all. Congratulations.
Just saying.
This is the man who goes to bed. Yeah, he's like, "I, I know about the sleep." He need to go get some sleep. Yeah, nobody's left. What are you, chopped liver, right?
All right, so we appreciate Nick and everybody getting that organized, and, and thank you for those kind words, Dr. Kenyon, and so, and we, for, for the ones that left, they won't hear this, of course, but next month, we'll recognize the eleven and twelve-year-olds, because there are just so many kids and so many parents, we would've busted out the walls trying to doll tonight, so we, we hold one for next time, so we'll do this again. All right, so that was our, our first recognition. Our second recognition is one that we're probably a, a little later in making than we need to, but we're gonna, in the sense of what I'll tell you. So, got something here, and, oh, just a quick story. This is Roger LaDuke's third time being here as our interim administrator, and if you add up all the times he was administrator, all the months, and put them together, he's actually served longer than some county council members have. So, it hits a pretty good tenure, and served longer than, than some of permanent administrators, if you will. So, Roger has done a great job, and, uh, county council, we'd like to recognize you, Roger, and let me read what this plaque says. "In grateful and sincere appreciation for your continued dedication to the citizens of Edgefield County for years as our interim administrator, thank you for moving Edgefield County forward with new ideas, bold innovation, and a desire to serve one and all. You have been a blessing. Presented December 6, 2022 by grateful Edgefield County Council." So would you meet me down here? And council, would you like to come down, let's get a photo here with... Well, and, and Roger, we didn't put the number of years on there, because, you know, there may be a time in the future, you know, twenty years from now, we need you back, so... So, just saying. So, thank you for all your years of service. The next recognition, I don't have a plaque for, but I did wanna tell you that our, our own vice chair, Albert Talbert, has, as of last month, graduated from the South Carolina Department of Commerce Economic Development Institute, so congratulations to...
Thank you. I'm shocked for words, I was, I didn't do it just for no, boom, fashion or anything, but I definitely appreciate the council members here who have always looked toward doing better things and better ideas. And I had been told that I, I should go on to Association of Counties and get, you know, I went there and left there with the economic development, and so, it hasn't been no easy job, working on your job, but it has been a great access to me, and I definitely appreciate y'all supporting me.
We, we're happy to do it, and then, since you have the floor, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you for our last presentation of the night, I think.
I would like to say, uh... Dean, you really, you really got me that time. I would like to say, um, good afternoon to each and every one. We noted that it's, it's time for Scott to, um, leave us, so to speak, go up here on council, and I can truly say that he had been a great access to Edgefield and the citizens here of Edgefield County. We hate to see him go, but we know that it comes a time when we all have to leave and, and go on for better things, and we're just hoping that, um, whatever you have in mind or doing, we hope that God be with you in your doing, and may he continue to bless you. We noticed that he has served in many areas on, uh, county council and, and all other government. Scott has served Edgefield County close to about nine years. He also served on the Tax Appeal Board, I believe that's about one year. He also served the Horsefield Board about two years. Six years with county council, and three of those years, he served as chairman of Edgefield County Council. I can truly say that we have worked together as a team, all of us. We didn't see eye to eye at all times, but when we left, we left with a great friendship. Regardless, no one says, we bumped head hard, hard at times, very hard, but we made it. And the plaque reads as follows. "Great appreciation for the Edgefield County Council recognizing Scott Cooper for his committed and dedicated service to the people of Edgefield County as a council member of Edgefield County Council, presented this day, December 6, 2022. On behalf of the council member, we thank you, Scott, and may God continue to bless you."
We're gonna walk to life tonight. And, Mr. Cooper, I was gonna say, if, if you like the floor, that we'd certainly entertain any comments you'd like to make.
May I, may I make a comment at the end of the meeting?
Sure.
So we can move on with the meeting?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
All right, so then, we will move to the, I said all the special recognition, unless I've just missed something, but I think we, it's a participation trophy, almost everybody gets something here if you're here tonight, I guess, but, so, including us, but, all right, so thank you for indulging that, I think that was great. Next is our comments from the public, and I'll remind our, our speakers, you have a maximum of five minutes, and, um, our clerk always keeps time, so she tells us when you have hit four minutes, and then you hit five minutes. So with that, we did have one person who signed up, Carl Long signed up, I think he wanted to talk about RV parks.
I didn't even notice it was on here, but I saw it from looking at the minutes online about RV parks, and I'm not even sure what y'all are talking about, but however, I'll introduce myself, I'm Carl Long, and I own the RV park on Highway 25, right by County Line Fire Department, right by Southern Felt Building. And I, I was gonna say, I don't know, Hart was telling me that y'all were talking more about the county parks that maybe are gonna become available or whatever, but I was gonna suggest, when I started my RV park, I met a guy in Charleston that had a RV park, and he told me the number one rule you should always remember in a RV park is the RVs should always be mobile, ready to be moved, and don't allow people to underpin them, add on decks, porches, or build on extensions, little houses to make them, because what happens in it, no longer is an RV park, it becomes a slum, basically, because people will stay in there, and you can't run them out, and then, when you victim, all that stuff's built around that twenty-five-year-old RV, and there's no way to move it out, and then that becomes a county problem, and, you know, of course, what, you know, as the people get older and RVs get older, that allows for the place to run down and then start causing, again, of course, fire, EMS, and police problems, when you have people that are in that type situation, when the, the RV is, you know, twenty-five years old. So that's what I learned. At my RV park, I don't allow any RV in that's less than ten years old. If it's more than ten years old, they can't come in my RV park and stay. And I was telling, uh, Mr. Cardell, that I also learned when I did it, that you cannot claim an RV as a permanent residence in South Carolina. Even the postmaster in North Augusta advised me of that, that I could only have one mailbox for all the people in the RV park, because you, to be a permanent structure, it has to meet building codes, and the wheels and the tongue, the part you pull it with, has to come out and be blocked up under, and then it, RV turns into a house then. So when you're in RV, it's not supposed to be claimed as a permanent residence, so I don't allow that either. I have one mailbox, and I only have that so for the traveling nurses and people like that, they can have packages delivered, and so they have an address to send it to. So that was the only thing I had to say, was, I didn't even know what y'all were talking about, but if you, if you set those rules, not so much to the acreage, but however, five acres is great, because that keeps people from, you know, you don't want, if you live in a house, you don't want somebody with one acre to put in ten campers beside you, because the county code here says you can put ten people per acre, so you don't wanna be living next to ten RVs on one acre of land. So if you have five acres, that keeps them spread apart, and then you have the ordinances that tell you how to be, you know, so many feet from the county... and then you have the ordinances that tell you how to be, you know, so many feet from the county, from the property line. And of course, you can't put 10 on acre anyhow, just because of sewage drain fills and the septic tanks and the water. It's impossible to put 10 on there unless you're some kind of miracle worker. But anyhow, acreage really plays a big part, and five acres is a good, good thing to keep it away from people. So unless y'all have a question, or if you have questions, you can call me, I don't mind. You can write through and look at mine the way I have it. You know, it says you have to have paved roads, and the main thing, too, you want to put in there that an RV park has to have a dumpster for the garbage.
Four minutes.
Okay, so just always make sure they have a dumpster, because then what happens is they start piling all the trash up, no way to get it. So, other than that, that's it, that's my little say.
Thank you. All right, counsel, that was the only person that signed up for the public comment session, the first one. So I will move to reports. Any questions or comments on the reports? Hearing none. Public hearing, we have two public hearings tonight. I guess, I guess, Carl, I should have mentioned we have a public hearing that you could spoke on it, but you've already said your piece now, but if you want to say it again. The first public hearing is ordinance number 2122787, in ordinance to modify Section 24-79 Recreation Vehicle Parks and 2491 Campgrounds of the Code of Ordinances. So was anybody here to speak at this public hearing? Okay. Hearing none, then counsel, I will close that public hearing and move to the second public hearing, which is for ordinance number 2122791, to rezon parcel number 1450900044000 from general residential to general commercial. Is there anyone here to speak on that ordinance at this public hearing? Okay, hearing none, counsel, I will close the second public hearing and go straight to old business. The first piece of old business, ordinance number 2122790, I just read the title above, so I don't plan to read that again. I'll ask the administrator, since this is third reading, is there anything new or different we need to know?
I have no new information.
Counsel, any comments or questions on this one? Hearing none, is there a motion to give third reading to ordinance number 2122790? Mr. Arlen makes the motions, they're second.
Second.
And Mr. Talbert, seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Excuse me, next under old business is consideration of, oh, I've already read that one, too. That's the ordinance number 2122791, the rezoning, I just read that title above. Again, I'll ask the administrator, is anything new or different in this ordinance?
I have no new information on this one as well.
Counsel, any comments or questions on this ordinance? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to give third reading to ordinance number 2122791? Dr. Kenyon makes the motions, they're second.
Second.
And Mr. Cooper, seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right, counsel, that's all the old business, we'll move to new business. So for new business, we have consideration of approval of Resolution Number 21221152, a contract to acquire 5.24 acres of property on Barton Road, for $155,000 contingent on receiving grant funding for the project. So there's some pieces and parts to this one, I'll ask the administrator if he'd like to go over with us.
Yes, thank you, there are a few pieces and parts. Barton Road off of Brighthop Road has for many years experienced flooding, mainly during really intense or long-duration rain events. The flooding is caused by stormwater runoff from local industries, industries from impervious soils and from Highway 25. Edgefield County has been involved in several lawsuits over the years on this issue. And a barrier to solving the problem has been the room needed to implement a solution. And the solution in this case is a detention pond. So a suitable property has been identified for the location of a detention pond, and the property owner is willing to sell the property for $155,000. His home is on it, it's a mobile home. And we, of course, obtained an appraisal for the property, and it appraised at $124,000. We think it is worthwhile, though, because we have long searched for a solution to this drainage issue. Now, the estimated cost to complete the stormwater project is $1,118,000, which includes the land purchase, so the construction of the detention pond, all the piping leading to and from it, and the cost of the property is that amount. Now, we have submitted a grant request to the state towards funding 85% of the project. We do believe we will receive that grant, we'll have to see. But our share remaining would be $167,779. So we would initially purchase the property with the intent to reimburse that money with grant funds. And we would attempt to make our match using county resources. For example, county road crew could excavate the pond or clear the light. So some of that money should be restored. Now, we should know if we receive the grant, hopefully within a month or two, but at least by April 1st, 2023. What we're asking counsel to approve is the purchase agreement contingent on receiving funding for the project. So we have a contract that spells out that we will not proceed with the purchase unless we receive the funding. That's all.
Questions from counsel?
So it's roughly $30,000 an acre?
That's correct.
Did we run some comps on previous sales in that neighborhood?
Well, we had an appraisal, and, and the appraiser did that. And that's where the $124,000 came from. Of course, we're a motivated buyer, and the gentleman didn't have it on the market, but that's what he's willing to sell it for.
I mean, I see it's very close to Highway 25, thus that, that would help elevate the cost per acre.
It, it would, and we will also, of course, have to sell the mobile home, so we will recoup some funds from that. It would not make the difference, but we would recoup some.
That was my question, what were we going to do with the home? So we plan on, we do that like on gov dot?
Govdeals, that's probably where we would sell it. We had thought about relocating it to a corner of the property and selling that corner, you know, as a setup residence. But, and that may be possible when it really gets into engineering, but right now, we think we'll probably need the bulk of the property for the pond. So we, we may have that option, we just don't note until it goes through full engineering.
The other question I have is, as it relates to where you do the retention pond, and I can't see the topography right now, I'm assuming you'll try and do that to the back of the property so that it's not disturbing Brighthop Road?
The detention pond is, is roughly centered in the property, but it takes up a great deal of it. It's mostly a dug pond, and it's mostly an infiltration basin. Given the soils there, most of the water should infiltrate rather than leave the pond.
All right, thank you.
I just want to say, I know, and I heard some gasp at the, the cost for this, and it is costly, and that's why it's taken us. I just want to remind people, remind our citizens, this project has been talked about for countless years, well before I ever, and I know, Ms. Louise, you've heard people get up here, too, through the years, as I sat there. I've seen grown men cry, asking for counsel to do something because of the issues that their homes were facing. And we could not, we as a county, have, didn't have access to funds, could not do it then. And, and just, we're blessed to have this option now, this availability to do this, and I'm prayerful that this will go through and we'll be able to do this, that we can solve this. This has been a long time needed. I'm so glad to see that this has been put in our path, that we can go forward. Hopefully, this works out, and we can get some, some, some help for these people. And they, this has been a very bad problem. My question to, to you, and I just, no, no, you're new to it, David, to this issue, but when this is all said and done, this will alleviate the problems we've been having. Is that correct, or are we just alleviating some of the problems, or we are eliminating these problems?
I'll let Doc answer that.
Thank you.
So about 84% of the problem comes from the industrial properties in Highway 25. The Highway 25 corridor's drainage was originally designed to have a retention pond about 500 feet from where we're planning to put this one. That retention pond was never created. So what happens is all of the drainage from Highway 25 is shedding right into that entryway of Barton Road, as well as all of the water shed from the four industries that are at the very beginning of that road. This pond would catch all the water from the industries and all the water from Highway 25. So the only thing it wouldn't catch is the rainwater that falls directly onto the affected properties themselves. So it'll catch 85% of it.
Even the, even the nursery?
So the nursery's a little bit further away, and that's more on Timberland. We do have a fix in, in, in the plans for that. That will not be part of this project, but we are working, well, the state is working with Costa on a plan to enlarge the retention pond that is at one of our recycling center sites, which should address the Costa Farm water, and then they have some other issues that they have to work out on their own side.
Mr. Chairman, if I could. You are correct, in 2011, I was, went out to that site, and we had several feet of water where people actually had to get around in boats. We looked at three different options. This is our third option, the first option was to outlet the water going to the south. The landowners did not want to sell us the property and use the pond that was currently there. Option two was another piece of property further down from the main road. And again, the homeowner was not willing to sell it. So when we look at this, we say it's $155,000. Two of the options that were our first and second, they were not willing to sell. And we didn't want to get into condemnation, you know, forcing them to sell. So even though the price is a little higher than we would prefer, we do have a willing seller, and we could avoid any relocation costs that are involved, that are required by federal government when you force someone to move from their property. And this will be a solution that will solve all the flooding on the road. If for some reason we had a major storm, and it seems like that 50- to 100-year storm happens every five years now, the water will fill that pond, and any overflow will dissipate very quickly as it goes down Barton Road and then into another field. So we feel this will satisfy all the needs of the residents in that area.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from counsel? Everybody's good, then I'll ask.
That, that is a great question, because quite a bit of the water is going to be coming off of US 25. And we have already indicated to the state that once we develop a solution, and we determine where the funding's going to come from, we'll be going to the state for 30% of the funding. Yeah, so we are going to the state, but we need to find out, do we get the grant, or do we not get the grant?
All right, counsel, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 21221152?
Same name.
All right, Ms. Arlen makes the motion, Dr. Kenyon, seconds, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next under new business, number two, is consideration of approval of the first reading of ordinance number 2122792 to replace Section, Chapter 6 Animals of the Code of Ordinances. So I'll ask the administrator if he'll kind of walk us through this one, too.
Yes, thank you, the Chapter 6 Animals portion of our Code of Ordinances is very outdated, and it does not address the needs of owning, operating, an animal control facility. Just like to say, we appreciate the work of staff, we appreciate the work of the Planning Commission, and of, of some council members commenting on the ordinance as we developed it, and also members of the public. This ordinance will regulate the operation of our facility. It will be more protective of animals, and it will also facilitate adoption, because that's what we all, we all want, we want any adoptable animal to be adopted. So I do want to, however, point out to counsel that this ordinance references fees, but the fees are not listed in it. There will be a separate fee schedule. As we get closer to opening our facility, we'll be receiving quotations from veterinarians, and that will help drive the fee structure that we have. So we will bring that to counsel in the spring. But yes, we believe that, that this current rewrite of the ordinance will fulfill the needs of regulating the operation of this facility. Thank you.
Questions or comments from counsel? Hearing none. The only comment I'm going to make is, assuming that we're going to give this first reading tonight, is that I would encourage any member of the public to get a copy of it, read it, we want your input, you know. So send it to us, call us, email us, we want to understand if there's something in there you don't like. Because this is first reading, so we've got two more readings, that means two more months to go. So with that, counsel, if there's nothing from counsel, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 2122792? All right, Mr. Talbert makes the motions, they're second.
Second.
Mr. Cooper, seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Number three under new business is consideration of entering into a consulting contract with Roger LaDuke from January 1, 2023 to June 1, 2023. So counsel, we've discussed this many times, and, and, and we remember that, of course, Mr. LaDuke's contract runs out at the end of December. We left it in place so that he could work in coordinated fashion with Mr. Cadell, who, of course, just started in October, so he's still getting his feet under him. But as we talked about previously, we wanted to make sure that the new administrator had an opportunity to, to have Mr. LaDuke available on a contract so that he could be called upon as needed, particularly during budget season. That's, which is really February through June, in essence, because you start that, probably in January, really, but in, in earnest in Ju, in February. So that's sort of laying the groundwork for you. I'll ask the administrator if there's something else we need to talk about related to this contract.
Yes, this contract will reflect an as-needed basis from January 1, 2023 through June 1, 2023, of approximately five to 10 hours per week at a rate of $70 per hour. There's no substantive changes in the contract versus the previous contracts, except that Mr. LaDuke will now be designated as a consultant. That's all.
Questions or comments from counsel? Okay, hearing none, then is there a motion to accept this contract as it's been presented?
Same with Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cooper makes the motion, Dr. Kenyon, seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. The next item, number four, is consideration of approval for a rental increase, rate, excuse me, rental rate increase for the Sweetwater Community Center and Bettis Park Picnic Shelter. Again, I'll call the administrator if he wants to walk us through these.
Yes, we have reviewed the rental rates for both facilities and discovered, and it, it should be obvious that our current rates were well, well below market. We proposed to increase the rates, we're not trying to be competitive with other communities. It's really hard to, to compare the Sweetwater facility to one in urban density, anyway. But we did need to recommend raising the rates just enough to cover maintenance of the facility, utilities, cleaning cost, and basic repairs. So we propose the rate structure. Um, so we propose, um, the rate structure that you see in your agenda and we think that will help fund the maintenance and upkeep of the facility. That's all.
And if I'm not mistaken, the current rates are the rates that were done when it was opened in twenty fifteen, sixteen, right?
I believe that to be the case.
I mean, not for Bettis Park, but for this, for Sweetwater, I mean. So I don't think they've been raised since then, so. All right, questions or comments for the administrator on this one?
I did ask Aretha to pull some surrounding area of ballpark rentals and community center type rentals as well. We are still well, well below market even by raising these fees. I was in there, uh, one day in her office and there was a gentleman from Augusta renting the ball field. I know why they're coming from Augusta to rent the ball fields because when I looked at the Augusta field fees, they are astronomical compared to our fees. So even though we're doubling in essence the fees and it, and it looks, oh, we're doubling, we are still well, well below market and, um, and we've made substantial improvements to the Sweetwater and making more and adding the, the, the new, we're making it more available and the lot box and all the things that we've done to improve that accessibility. I think this is definitely warranted and I again, want to thank you for all your hard work in, in getting all that done for us. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add to, uh, what Tiffany had just said. And if we have to, at least we have to start somewhere, so this is a start. So, um, maybe in the next couple of years, we'll continue to raise it a little until we finally get close to the rest of, uh, facilities around in this area. But I think, thanks. I knew that we needed a, a raise. Because I, I know some people out of McComick, they was going there and there a lot. But they didn't let me know that it was much cheaper, but I, I knew what was going on, so. I definitely appreciate you all working on this. It means a lot.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to, uh, to, uh, adopt the rental rate increase as it's been presented? Mr. Talbert makes the motions, there's a second. Mr. Cooper seconds, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Now we're down to the second, uh, public comment period. So I'll ask the clerk if she can hand me the, if there are any, I think somebody, at least one, to sign up. And the same rules apply, maximum of five minutes for our speakers and our, our clerk will tell you when it's four minute, four and at five. So the first, uh, speaker that signed up is John Hudson.
I want to commend y'all, um, at least you take the job even though you get pruned on and slapped on. So I commend you. My word is a word of correction that I speak and it's from the Lord. And it's fitting only, I forgot about it, this is the end of the year, going out with old and coming in with the new. Wow, I didn't think about that. But, uh, we, uh, I said life, but what we are about, I'm about here today, stewardship of this land that Edgefield County is responsible for. It's not just y'all, it's us too. So we're all in it together. But in the past, it's been some harm done. Scott, uh, I told him before, I've talked to him several times and I used to tell him that you can't serve two masters. You'll love one and hate the other. Scott hadn't been fair and done this property, this, this Edgefield County right in his voting and bringing about what he did on changing the land development. And God has showed his hand in it. And so correction was brought. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, that goes for you too, going into the new year. The Lord said you was a company man and you're not to be a company man. You're supposed to be a kingdom builder, not a flesh, let the flesh lead you in anything. If you, we think we're supposed to separate Christ from the government, which is a lie from hell. You see where we're going because we did that. Edgefield needs to be oasis like New, the park in New York. We need to be, not strip it all, not strip it all down for money. God is very concerned about this, or he wouldn't have brought me here. We are to be good stewards and going into the new year is leaving the old behind and bringing in the new. You will have new counsel here and you will need to have much prayer and discernment and not make carnal decisions which bless evil men. And we not to look at things that way. We're supposed to live by faith and we're not doing it. We're losing even our county at this point. So I give you the ammunition, God says he will bring correction to each one of you and us that is not bringing better stewardship of what we own. And we're not to let religion lead us no more, nor the Pharisees. And I think y'all all hopefully know your Bible good enough to know where that'll get us. It put Christ to death and of course, right now, everybody's trying to take Christ out of this country. It is his country, it is his earth and we took, again, back to good stewardship. So I pray and you will see correction. It will come if we're not reverent and have a reverence fear of our Lord. And, and I'm saying that with the utmost, I feel like a canary in a coal mine standing here, but for what he's done to me, I'm not ashamed to stand here and say this in front of all of you. We all accountable if you call yourself a Christian. So sir, as y'all come together and take counsel, you need discernment and wisdom of the Lord, not of man in making decisions from this county forth coming into the new year. And there will be correction necessary because the Lord is starting to come to this earth. He's closer than he's ever been. And guess what? His kingdom's not far off. Actually, the word says his kingdom is in you. So we should act like Christ. We're supposed to be the light. We are ambassadors of the light. Either you in Christ or you anti-Christ and that's manifesting in this country. Because the church has gotten away with riding the fence for fifty years. And I love to say with no condemnation, God is bringing correction to his body and it starts in the church anyway. And you represent him, you are ambassadors to the living God. And if we do not steward this, he will let Islam and any other religion correct us. So we need to get our house in order, ma'am. Well, anyway, I think you get my point. If we don't learn to reverence him, he's bringing a correction. It says he burns up the chaff and separates the chaff from the wheat. Do not be caught being the chaff, you will get burned up. I have seen his wrath, I know it personally. He gave me this and we know what the rod of staff is of Moses and Elijah and all the prophets of old. Amen? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Louise Kemp Sells.
For you that don't know, Mr. Cadell's in Pacific, I'm Louise Kemp Sells. I'm usually here representing Glean's. But all I have to say about Glean's tonight is we're going to be going on our statewide retreat on Thursday. This time we're having it up in Merle Beach. And one thing about it, when I go through these retreats, it's not a vacation. Anyone can tell you, I sit there through each speaker and I'm always up front. I don't get in the back so I can sleep and go in the hallway and get treats. And then I had one member that asked me one year, Ms. Sells, uh, can I borrow your notes? Somebody stole mine. I said, who you telling? I said, you didn't take any notes? I said, you was back there sleeping and going in the hallway eating. And I said that to say this, it takes a lot on me to sit there for two or three hours behind each speaker, but I do it. And I don't just get information pertaining to head start or early head start and all that. I get information that anything that I can get to enhance Edgefield County, I get it. I sit there, I listen and when I get back, I try to use it. Whether it be at Glean's, the senior citizen council, my Masonics or whatever. Whatever I get and I can bring it back to Edgefield, I do it. And on that last note, coming through town tonight, I was just at, hoo, looking at the decoration. I don't know who did it, but they really stepped up to the plate this time. Edgefield should be in the news, that's all I'm saying. I took pictures down in Trenton yesterday and I thought that was something, but I can't wait to tell them, Edgefield topped them big time. I'm a bragger. And again, I love Edgefield. I didn't come back to Edgefield just to put my name on a piece of paper. I came back to help Edgefield. Reach for the stars and anything in between that you can use, make sure you grasp it. Happy holidays, guys.
All right, thank you. Well, council, that's everyone who signed up for the second public comment period. So I'll close that and this looks like probably a good time. Mr. Cooper, if I can turn the floor over to you.
I just want to say thanks for the plaque. It's been a privilege and an honor to serve with you, uh, and Mr. Pettigrew on the hospital board and those that served on the tax appeals board during my season. I did write a little something. I, I've invested a fair amount of time thinking about what I might say that would add value to our future. Um, I'm confident that Chairman Campbell is going to list our accomplishments this year, many of which were a culmination of years of effort, as Tiffany referenced. Um, rather than add to the list that Dean is going to share, please indulge me as I share two concepts which come to mind as I think about the future of our future history. So we're writing history. First is momentum and the second concept is status quo. Momentum, in the last several years, we have drastically added the number of taxpayers to our county. Industrial taxpayers, small business taxpayers and residential taxpayers. This has helped create the financial momentum we needed to execute many of the projects we have closed on in the last couple of years. It's critically important from my view that we continue to capitalize on that momentum and continue to grow it so that we can continue to improve the ser-, services that our constituents want, as well as continue to improve the compensation that our county team members desire and deserve. Um, second is the status quo. My first year on council, I spoke quite a bit about rotational leadership. Those that were here then will remember we talked about rotational leadership even on all of the boards which serve our county. And, uh, so as our region continues to grow and continues to be under tremendous financial pressure due to the demographic shifts taking place in our country, the growing industries in our region, which results in our growing population, it is my hope that we will continue to look for fresh faces to serve on our boards to include county council. Rotational leadership is paramount in my opinion if one wants to capitalize on these trends and not fall victim to the status quo. So in closing, I chose to re-, rotate myself off of this board. Please know that I will still continue to be involved. I will do all I can to assist the Sweetwater community and Edgefield County as we progress further into our future. It has been an honor and privilege to serve the citizens of our county alongside with each of you and I look forward to a great future.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cooper. And I think we ought to give him a round of applause for his service, so thank you. All right, with that, we will move to the county administrators' report.
Thank you. I have five things to report. First on the fire departments, I attended a fire board meeting on the twenty-first, November twenty-first and presented a draft incentive program to encourage non-certified firefighters to pursue certification. Several of the attendees did express support there and several contacted me afterwards, um, a couple of chiefs did, to express support for the program. In January, I'll be bringing a proposal to council to incentivize firefighters to obtain their certifications, um, to level one, that's a hundred and seventy-one hours at ten dollars per hour. We would also like to, in this first, um, inaugural program, include emergency medical responders. That certification requires fifty-one hours. We would like to incentivize that at ten dollars per hour too. And the reason being, if you're on a rural road and you have a, a wreck, oftentimes the fire truck gets there before the ambulance. Um, we want trained, um, medical responders to serve our citizens. So on that note, our EMA director, Foster Crowder, and several others within our organization, within county government can actually teach that class. They're certified to teach it and issue certifications. So no money would be paid until certification is achieved. And I propose, I will propose at least three stipends of each category, firefighter level one and emergency medical responder per fire department for the initial program. And so we can gauge interest, there are seven fire departments, so three each. On the animal control facility, the building has been ordered and work will begin this month. There's going to be a groundbreaking at, on December nineteenth at two P M. The site can be accessed from Rabbit Trail just below Star Road and there will be a deputy station to guide people in and help them park. Saluda County has approached us about partnering on an animal control facility. We have had some initial discussions with them and I look forward to bringing some information on that to council for your consideration. On Edgefield, on the Edgefield soccer field drainage, I think I've reported earlier that the town of Edgefield received a park and recreation development fund or pard grant for drainage. The county intends to contribute an equipment operator and dump truck to help town staff install French drain. And we want to follow that up by a deep aeration and top dressing. We're going to start on the side of the field closest to the trussel, um, where the lar-, where the big kids play, the, the older kids play because they really do more damage to the field when they're playing on it. Um, and if, if anyone wonders why we are partnering with the town of Edgefields, because our county rec soccer program uses that soccer field. On Bettis Park, we also received a pard grant to repair and upgrade the electrical at the Bettis Park Picnic Shelter and to put a new roof on the bathroom in the amount of eight thousand dollars. We've already gotten quotations on the roof and that will take about half of that. So we think this grant money will, will fund, um, with our two thousand dollar match, all of these repairs. Those projects are, are out for bid now and we're receiving bids and repairs will be completed in the spring. And finally, um, we'll be hosting a barbecue Christmas lunch for county employees on the fourteenth and, and we look forward to seeing all county employees on that day and celebrating with them. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments for the administrator?
May I just say one thing real quickly? Again, soccer and you know, Roger, while, well, before I got up here, I was down there begging for something to be done to the soccer field. I just want to say thank you for putting in the hard work. I know both of y'all have worked on this to get that done. Um, that field is a tremendous asset to the county. All of soccer meets there and plays as one. It's such a family-friendly environment. It's just wonderful to have all the kids there together. Um, that field needs great attention though. It has been overlooked for many, many years and this will, I pray, do great things and say it will last us for a long time into the future because, um, and we are the major users of that. We as the county are the major users of that field. We have two seasons, we have a spring season and a fall season and those seasons run for several months and we put a lot of wear and tear on that field. And it's important that those kids have a good, good place and we want to be proud of that and thank y'all for your work and I'm excited to see what that's going to look like.
It is a partnership with county resources.
I put in tremendous soccer complex. I have some special, I've done the, the best you can buy in drain system and soccer field. I have a bunch at my office of dr-, special drains, you welcome to have three. If you never go that way, that doesn't matter to me. I was going to sell them. If you never go that way, that doesn't matter to me, I was himself, but I'd rather give them to the county. And since I'm aware of the design and all that, I could give you some information, you take what you want.
Thank you.
Okay, council, questions or comments from you, anybody? Okay. If not, then I'll close with some comments. First, I want to start by thanking Mr. Cooper for his service to our county. Since this is the final meeting of 2022, I wanted to take just a moment to remind council what we've accomplished this year. I found that sometimes it's good to take a breath and reflect on what we've done to help the citizens of Edgefield County. So first, I think the most important thing we could do is hire an administrator who I think will do a great job for us, and we've done that. And our new clerk to council began her time with us in January, and she's proven to be a great asset as well, a tremendous part of what we're trying to do. From a project standpoint, our largest project without question is a law enforcement center. This project cost all in is $42 million or more. We did receive $18 million from the state for this project, and that makes a huge difference. We'll pay the rest from the capital project sales tax that voters passed two years ago. Now, we broke ground on a new law enforcement center last month, and it's pretty amazing that two years ago, we were rethinking the law enforcement center and how we could even fund it, and now construction is beginning, and that's a great success story for our county. Also, we approved more than a half million dollars to invest in a new animal control facility. It'll be built on the same land as you've heard, as the law enforcement center, and we plan to break ground on that facility this month, and it should be ready to operate by late summer. Again, that's another success story. I've talked about two very big projects in Edgefield County, the law enforcement center, the largest ever, of course, and there's one more very large and important project. You approved earlier this year more than $2 million to complete an overhaul of our emergency communication system. We all know we have spots in the county that police, fire, EMS, and others can't communicate. We've tried to patch it over the years, but it's been a Band-Aid approach. This new system will include adding two new towers to the county and replace communications equipment on two other towers. It will mean new radios for all, all our law enforcement, EMS, firefighters, first responders, emergency management, and others, and this will be a quantum leap for our county in communications, and will provide much better protection for our citizens. That communications work is ongoing right now, and should be operational by late summer if we don't experience supply chain issues. This project and the animal control facility would be funded through the American Recovery or ARPA funds. Now, to be clear, when it comes to the areas I've covered so far, it takes the cooperation of the towns, fire departments, police, EMS, emergency management, and others, especially on the law enforcement facility, animal control, and communications overhaul. I did want to say a special word of thanks to Sheriff Roland and his staff. We could not have accomplished this work without their involvement and guidance. The sheriff has been a great partner for us, and we certainly appreciate his efforts. And I'll also add that we certainly appreciate the efforts of all of staff who worked very hard on all those, and other things that we don't see and talk about, but they did yeoman's work on trying to make sure we had these giant projects under control that could do them well. Now, while those topics fall into the category of major projects, I'd like to mention a few other highlights from the year. We completed this year a rezoning effort that, as you recall, has taken us three-plus years to complete. We finished our council redistricting after the census. We approved a tax incentive to give developers a chance to breathe new life into the Kendall Mill in Edgefield. We renamed the Edgefield County Airport, or Airfield, for Linda and Johnny Anderson. We improved an ordinance that expands the ability for local and minority businesses to bid on jobs, which means we should be able to award more bids to more local and minority businesses. We lowered our millage rate last year, excuse me, for next year, because we were able to reestablish a road maintenance fee. The road maintenance fee is a feral way for roads, to pay for roads, than a millage increase. We earmarked a half million dollars of ARPA funds for grants for our town governments that they can apply for to help them better the lives of their citizens. And we understand that town residents also pay county taxes, and the county's committed to finding ways to work to help these citizens, just like everybody else. To do our part to help curb litter, you know, for the past several years, we've had a litter control officer, he's helped collect trash, and he's written tickets to offenders. Also, council approved in this year's budget, the first, for the first time, two additional workers who will have picking up litter as 100% of their job. There are many other important changes, such as new industrial park infrastructure and signage, as well as work on major storm drainage improvements and some trouble spots in the county, just like we did tonight. We worked with the hospital to procure a new ambulance, and we've also ordered another ambulance, since it takes about a year or more to get one. And we've also increased our school resource officers from four to eight. As I've mentioned, these are just the highlights, all of you know we've accomplished plenty more. In all, it's been the most productive year I believe county has, this county has seen in decades, and I'm proud of the work undertaken by county council and shouldered by our staff. I think the public sometimes doesn't get to see what gets accomplished by county council and county government. I believe this council has taken our commitment to Edgefield County citizens to a new level of service, and we've prepared the county for the future. I want to say a sincere thank you to each member of county council. Now, that's in the rearview mirror. Now, looking forward, I want to announce that county council will have a retreat on January 10th at 5:00 here in council chambers. We will discuss the work we want to accomplish in the next several years. If anyone in the public has information you'd like us to consider, please send it to the administrator or us prior to January 10th. The administrator will also be soliciting input from county employees, department heads, and elected officials. Let me say for clarity, that we are asking for all this input in advance, not at the meeting. While this meeting, like all meetings, is open to the public, and we encourage everyone to attend, we need to be able to consider all input ahead of time, it just helps us make better decisions. I don't have any additional comments, and there is no business left to conduct, so I would be happy to ask Mr. Cooper if he'd like to make his final motion, that being to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
The motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
And Dr. Kenyon, seconds. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Ms. Kemp, Ms. Kemp said.
I got money, I got.
Ah, look at her.